From the southeastern corner of western North Carolina, this is Polklore.
I'm your host, James Harnishian. If you've been listening to this podcast since the beginning, you know that what happens at meetings of the Polk Board of Education was a big reason why I'm doing what I'm doing. But for everyone else, I'll just repeat myself briefly. In these hyperpolarized times when it seems that it's almost impossible for political competitors to agree on anything, pride in our county's school system seems to be the exception that proves the rule. And until this year, our school board was mercifully free of the direct influence of the political parties. But last year, North Carolina's legislature, with the cooperation of our state representative and senator, and/or the objections of the county commission, local leaders of both parties, and just about everyone else, made seats on the school board partisan positions. So here we are. But then a strange thing happened. Instead of a rush of candidates from both parties for the three seats up for grabs this election cycle, only two are being contested. Of the incumbents, try ons Rick Kovell, a registered Democrat, is running unopposed. And Cindy Allen of White Oak, who's officially an independent, managed to get enough support to get added to the ballot. And she's facing a challenge only from a Democrat, Sid Mutchler. Only Saluda's seat, which is currently held by Democrat Rob Parsons, involves a two-party race. Rob's challenger is Rick Stitch, who joined me on my porch in Saluda after August's school board meeting. Rick is, well, I'll let him introduce himself. But first, I need to alert you to something new for this podcast. When you hear this sound, that means I've inserted a clarification or correction, recorded after the interview, that I think is necessary to ensure I don't leave anyone with a misunderstanding or confused about an issue or event that either I or my guest brought up. Rick Stitch, welcome to Polklore.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
Let's get right into it then by introducing yourself. I don't think a lot of people have an opportunity to get to know candidates for school board that well. And so tell me a bit about yourself.
Okay, I agree with you. Most people don't get the opportunity to know school board candidates. So I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Rick Stitch. I've been living in Saluda since 1999. I was transferred here by the General Electric Company when I became the vice president of a lighting fixtures group in Hendersonville. I did that for about three years and they ran into some business problems with a computer program. So they got a lot smaller very quickly. So I transferred down to the Greenville facility in gas turbines. But my wife and I, neither one wanted to move. We like it where we live. But that gave me a 50-mile each-way commute. So while I lived here, I was only basically here to sleep for most of that time period. I retired in 2019 and had gone through some family issues. My first wife passed away and I married again. So my wife and I live here and after a year or so of traveling, we decided we wanted to get more involved. So I picked the school board. So that's how I got on my road to where I'm at. My basic premise for being on the school board is that I want to see the kids here today have at least opportunities as good as I did when I was their age. They have some advances we didn't have. I'm dyslexic and they didn't know what that was in the 1960s. So I was kind of considered dumb and lazy until I learned how to deal with my learning disability and it just fine. But if it wasn't for the people who took the time to pay attention to me, I never would have gotten where I am. So I'd like to make sure that that's still there today.
Okay, my question to every candidate for school board, because you know, I was just watching actually a recording of last night's school board meeting, which they put up on YouTube.
Then you saw that I was in that meeting?
Yeah.
And pushing.
Well, and it's always good to have people who at least understand what a school board meeting is all about. And let's face it, they're mostly pretty dry, boring, long meetings that talk about administrative details that just have to be done. They're not very exciting. So what do you hope to contribute to the school board and the management of Polk schools that you're not convinced the folks who, you know, who you'd be running against, Rob Parsons, is your competitor here? What do you hope to contribute that you think you don't see on the board right now?
Rob Parsons and I have some different philosophies in terms of what we're seeking in life. I'm family, faith, and freedom. He's a little more on the progressive side. And that was part of the issue from last night. I, that was a personal type discussion because there was an employee involved and there's certain limitations that exist in what schools can talk about. So some of it happens in closed session. But when you have friends, you kind of understand who's doing what. They originally had an employee who was involved in a felony issue. In fact, it's, it's recorded in public knowledge. They mentioned her name, Ellen Rogers. And the original story broke in March and it was on text news and the internet. And I think it was from the Daily Planet about her being arrested for transporting a convicted sex offender to a band practice. To me, that's kind of a big deal. And I think most people in this area would consider it a big deal.
Didn't the school board treat it as a big deal?
Yes, they were treating it as a big deal. But sometimes things don't always work out. Even though you're taking an approach, it doesn't necessarily work out that way. And I made a simple call. I called to ask what the vote was when they said they eliminated Ellen from the payroll. And they said, well, it was, it was taken in closed session. And I'm familiar with most states having sunshine laws. So
Yeah, but personnel matters are routinely dealt with in closed session.
Not entirely.
Well, there's always exceptions.
No, no, no. The whole part is not done in closed session. That's the thing that I brought to the school board. The open sunshine laws requires the votes to remove or add people, even personnel, to be public. That wasn't done. So the vote was never holding any of the school board members accountable. I believe we were accountable for what we do. So I asked the seat of vote and I was told you can't do that. So I went back and forth and we worked out an equitable agreement. And it was going a little slow. So I decided to show up and nudge it a little bit and ran into a little bit with an attorney there who said that he sort of believed that it's all private too, until I showed him the NCGS that in fact says it's not.
Now, just for folks, NCGS is the North Carolina general statutes. It's the laws of the state.
And it overrides any of the local procedures and they use pretty much Robert's rules of order. But that's the specific general statute. In the very bottom of it, it says that all votes of removal of an employee are public and must be made in a public meeting. So the vote is supposed to be available to the people to judge their representatives. And that was what I was pushing on last night. And if you stayed on, they didn't do the podcast after the closed session, had an open meeting with me being the only attendee, and did an open vote on Ellen Rogers and removed her from, from Saluda school board. Now, that's important because if you don't follow the state statutes, employees are allowed to appeal. She could go appeal, take it to Superior Court, win, and end up being paid back pay for the time she was off. I thought that was important to resolve. That's why I was there.
This is actually a little complicated. The relevant section of the North Carolina general statutes does require school boards to vote in open session after deliberating and voting in closed sessions, even when it comes to personnel matters. But typically, what happens in such circumstances is that the board takes a public vote to confirm votes taken during the closed session. And that often means the vote taken in public is a blanket vote covering multiple actions taken behind closed doors. I checked with Polk schools and that appears to be what happened in this case. Is that sufficiently transparent? Should we be able to know how each board member voted on each issue, including when they fire a teacher? That's a fair question. But what happened at the August 13th board meeting wasn't a deviation from standard operating procedures, and it appears to be perfectly legitimate. Back to the discussion. All right. But that particular issue wasn't the thing that provoked you to decide to run for school board? Because you actually
It kind of was.
Well, yeah, but you sort of ran for five minutes two years ago, right?
Yeah, I did.
And do you want to explain why your name ended up on the ballot and then you kind of withdrew from the race?
Yep. Because I tried to take it off and I missed the deadline.
Yeah.
It came down to one thing. I went in, when I, when I first put my name on, I was told I was the only candidate. In fact, somebody else had come in that morning with a different person filling it out. They didn't know that I was the second candidate, which would have made a difference in my filing because I won, and the school board normally doesn't have a lot of people on it. And the Saluda seat was open and I'm a Saluda resident. So I decided that was something I wanted to do because I've universally seen tools marching off in the wrong direction. And I'd like to march them back to where they were. And Polk County's pretty much stayed that way, but it's starting to change. If you look at the candidate profile for the candidates, you'll find there are two very much progressive candidates, Sid and Rob Parsons. Okay? They never existed prior to now. So
Well, Rob's been on the board for a couple of years now.
Nope. That was his first time on.
Well, no, but he
He was appointed and then ran.
Right. But so he had, he was appointed almost two and some years ago, and he was elected two years ago.
Right.
And now he's, now he's running for his full term because he's
Yes, he's, he's still got less than
Sarah Bell's term and
He's still got less than four years.
Yeah. Well, yeah. But, but he's not new. I was just saying, I want to clear
Relatively speaking.
Okay. Okay. But you, you raise an interesting point because
But he's also gone through a transition too. He used to be, if I remember correctly, a Unitarian pastor and then is no longer because he broke out with the Unitarian church.
But we're talking about, it's Methodist.
Methodist, okay. Anyway, he broke from them and he now has his own church, not associated with that.
It's a little bit off the beaten track here. I don't want to, I'd rather not have you talk about Rob's religious affiliations.
Right. I'm not, I'm just talking about the fact that he made a change in his life.
Yeah. Well, I mean, people are entitled, I guess.
Absolutely.
I think it's fair to repeat that Rob Parsons has a long history with the Methodist church in Saluda. He returned to run the Saluda church about four years ago after completing a regional assignment, and he doesn't have his own church. What I think Rick was alluding to is the recent schism in the United Methodist Church over just how inclusive they want to be. But the short answer here is Rob's relationship with his church in Saluda is the same as it ever was. But I want to key on to something you kind of mentioned. You think the board is going in an interesting direction. And, and the reason you originally wanted to run two years ago is you didn't think there was anybody else challenging Rob.
Okay. And why I left it, I looked at the candidate spread and there was me, there was Robin, and there was German, and there was Rob.
Yeah.
The best candidate was Robin. And I tried to remove myself so we didn't split the vote because it's nonpartisan. People are going to look for conservatives. And I called the Board of Elections and they said, no, you have to do it within like three days of when you register. So there was no chance to, so I just didn't campaign for myself. In fact, I supported Robin and went around and campaigned for her and told people that.
Which is why you only ended up getting a smattering of votes.
299 votes. It surprised me. Robin, Robin got the bulk of them for the conservative side, but German did enough. And if you add up the votes from all three of us, we had 53% of the vote. Rob only had 47.
Well, this is
So partisan will split that a little differently.
Rick's point about the more conservative candidates splitting the vote is valid, but his numbers aren't quite accurate. According to the State Board of Elections, in 2022, Rob Parsons won 49.15% of the vote, not quite enough to claim a majority. That means the other candidates did split 50.85% of the vote. And of course, there's no guarantee that had two of the three conservatives not been on the ballot, that all of the votes would have gone to the same place. It's actually more likely that Rob, given how well-known he is in Saluda, would have picked up enough to put him over the 50% mark. Well, I, that's, I wanted to talk about the fact that we now have partisan school board is not something that anyone in Polk County was pushing for. We've talked about this on this podcast several times. Jake Johnson and I discussed it in depth. And basically, the Board of Commissioners asked the legislature not to make us partisan. In fact, there was a, quite a fuss about it. And several former superintendents made presentations to the Board of Commissioners, the current superintendent. And the commissioners basically finally figured out that nobody was actually wanting this. And they asked for the legislature to at least give us a referendum to allow the people to decide. And the legislature decided no. This is part of a trend. The state legislature, which is controlled by the Republican Party, has done several things with Polk County, including just most recently, the two try-on seats on the board are now just going to be one try-on seat with one seat at large for the whole county. Again, nobody seems to know where this
That came from population. Try ons population is smaller relative to Polk County. So to give it two seats would mean you'd have to up the number of seats for the other locales. It was better to simply make one seat in that large seat. And that way they're all population balanced and you have one that includes the entire county, which people don't realize, just because you're from the Saluda seat, doesn't mean only Saluda district gets to vote for you.
That's a very good point. I'm glad you raised it because I was going to raise it. If you didn't, people need to know they, they vote for all of the seats.
Absolutely.
And yeah, and so
So I campaigned in Green Creek. I campaigned in White Oak. I campaigned in Saluda. As a matter of fact, I'm the vice chairman of the Saluda party.
Right. Now, what I found interesting about this decision to split the try-on seat is not that it's necessarily a bad idea. Like demographics evolve, populations change, and just because something's been that way for 40 years doesn't mean you shouldn't tinker with it as, as the world evolves. I understand that. And I don't think I've come across anyone who, who's taking issue with the concept of splitting the try-on seat. The question is, why was there no consultation? No one contracted the school board. No one contacted anyone in government as far as I can find out. It's, it's a part of a trend coming from Raleigh of doing things like splitting our county in two congressional districts.
That's not Raleigh. That's driven off the census. They had to redo the entire districts. And that's also where the try-on thing came. Sometimes when you
No, I know. And I mean, that's
It's your turn.
Yeah, but it's not quite true because we had, we had districts, congressional districts in North Carolina that were actually very closely aligned to the popular vote. It was 7-7, Republican, Democrat seats. And then the latest North Carolina Supreme Court threw out those seats, even though no one really asked them to. And the previous Supreme Court had supported them and actually had them drawn up by what they call a master. It was clearly a political decision by the Republican Party.
I would disagree with the nobody asked them to. Nobody, nobody in one half of the state asked them to, but the other half did. See, if you look at like Roy Cooper, Roy Cooper was elected by 19 counties. The other 81 counties voted against him.
Yes, but he won the popular vote and it's a statewide office.
That's right. It's a statewide office and that was a case of mob rule.
Okay. But we won't waste our listeners' time on too much more of this. But I just, I think there's a clear trend of the legislature, the Senate and the House in Raleigh, making decisions about Polk County, which may or may not be wise decisions. I'm not going to weigh in on it. It's simply that there is very, very little, if any, consultation done with the folks in Polk County who are most affected by these decisions. So I just wonder if you have any concerns about that. And as a member of the school board, if you're elected, would you expect to be consulted on changes to education in Polk County before your state rep and senator make those votes?
I do get consultation with Jake Johnson all the time. Their, Polk County has, for a long time, been a Democrat county.
Well, until about 2010.
Yeah, until about 2010. And then it started shifting. And what you're seeing is people, like I did know about the bit with the commissioners. In fact, that was driven mostly by one single commissioner who pushed it. And that's why it happened late in the process. The legislature had been consulting with people in the county, mostly Republican, because it's a Republican legislature and it's a Republican representative. And as you said, that's what the majority of this county voted for. So they were consulting the constituencies, not all of them. And the Supreme Court ruled sometime back that partisanism is okay when you lay out districts. And they were doing that. And the last time districts were laid out was, like you said, back in the 2010 era. And they were laid out pro-Democrat. And there were people, mostly on the Democrat side, who, when they got a chief justice for the Supreme Court as a Democrat, wanted to undo what had just been done by the Republican Supreme Court.
Well, I'm not
And they did.
I can't argue with you that the Democratic Party's got a lot to answer for in history. Gerrymandering and that kind of thing
Is always going to exist.
Well, it is unless, of course, you get rid of the ability of the legislature to draw the districts, which
Who would you give it to? The legislature represents the will of the people.
Yes.
That is the most democratic group there.
Well, not if it's, if they're elected on a gerrymandered district system. That's the problem. It's
You can still beat a gerrymandered district system. That's how the Republicans got power.
And presumably sooner or later, they'll lose it to the Democrats.
Correct.
But in the meantime, things are kind of out of whack. I mean, I think it's 11 or 12 states now have independent, independent redistricting commissions so that we take it out of the direct hands.
I've never seen an independent commission in my life and I'm 70 years old. Maybe you've seen something I haven't.
Well, fortunately, I grew up in Canada where they're all independent.
Up until recently.
Well, no, no.
COVID didn't work out very well. That's why they had all the demonstrations with the truckers and everything else.
Yeah, but COVID's got nothing to do with electoral districting. I'm just saying, there are 11 states in the United States, I think it's 11, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's approximately 11 that take the ability to gerrymander and do things like split Polk County in two, out of the hands of the folks who are most likely to benefit from, from that decision or suffer from that decision. I probably should have been better prepared on this issue as I've been writing about electoral districting for about 30 years. So here's the current situation. Nine states have independent redistricting commissions. Four have advisory commissions that only make recommendations about how district lines should be drawn. And seven have separate commissions that include, but are not composed entirely of state legislators. The United States is actually an outlier when it comes to drawing electoral districts. Like in Canada, most countries don't let ruling parties do it themselves for obvious reasons. So what I'm, if I want to get back to this, you know, this, this subject, which is you wanting to be on the school board, if, for instance, you find yourself, something weird happens, the Democrats take over control of the State House, would you be confident that decisions that they make without consulting Polk County would, would be reasonable and would, would reflect the will of the voters?
Not necessarily.
So, but you have confidence that they would now?
No, I'm happy with that they will now, more than I'm confident. When you're not the party in power, you're never confident of the party in power. And that's always going to be true. That's part of life. That's why we have a system of checks and balances and it, and it flips back and forth. I, you know, I, I started off in a family of all Democrats and we slowly moved around to be both. My grandfather on my mother's side was a Jake Johnson from the 35th District of Kentucky. So I grew up in Democrat land. They moved out, Republicans moved in. I'm a Reagan Republican. Life changes. There's no absolute certainties and there's no independent commission is going to be completely independent. I've never seen it in my life. I trust the bulk of the people much more than I trust 10 or 15 people. Now, sometimes you have to vest power in a small number of people. I'm ex-military. I understand that. I was a Navy lieutenant. They placed great power in me. Top of that, I was a reactor control assistant to the engineer on a ballistic missile submarine and part of the team that decoded and authenticated nuclear weapons. So I've had my share of power. I understand that a Democratic president was telling me what I was going to do, even though I'm a Republican. I know that. And I still had to follow his orders, even if I didn't like them, unless it was wrong. If it was clearly wrong by the procedures that we had, I could resist. Otherwise, I signed up to do what I signed up to do. So if I'm on the school board and the party's changed from Republican to Democrat, they do. I'll do my job as best I can to support my constituency, regardless of the circumstances around me.
Can't argue with that.
Thank you.
Let's talk more specifically about the sort of things a school board does that I think people are interested in. Because again, a lot of what they do
Most of what they do is totally mundane and boring.
Capital plans, paving
So many people think you have to be an education person to be on the school board. And in fact, 90% of it has very little to do with that. And when I listened to what they wanted to do with the new changes that they wanted to make in the grading systems and whatnot, I was perfectly fine with it. The educators seemed to know what they want to do that's best for the students. And they were looking at what was best for the students. But when I looked at the budgetary processes, which I'm very familiar with, from spending 38 and a half years in industry, including construction projects, because that's what I did when I was down in Greenville, we built gas purban-driven power plants in countries all around the world. So I know what construction projects look like. And I also know that there's opportunities there. And that's one thing I do bring. Because I can actually talk to the guy who said, I've only done residential real estate. I've done commercial.
Well, that's interesting. I never really thought about talking to school board members about the mundane stuff. But you're right, you, someone with your background
They spent like $8 million on a construction project and they were trying to do it at certain times of the year, which happened to overline with when the DOT needs the people that they're using. So what they were doing is competing for a scarce resource. If they could have broken that project up into pieces and done it off schedule, they probably could have got a lower cost. That never came up.
Usually though, wouldn't the school board basically trust the administration to make these kinds of decisions properly? And they just make sure that they're doing it correctly?
They are doing that right now. And the administration guy said, I'm a, I'm a residential real estate person, not commercial, and I'm learning. I have an advance on that. I have been down part of that road. So I can offer something. That's something that a lot of them, because they are mostly education majors, I'm the only one with 38 years of business that I know of. I've hired over 200 college graduates. I know some of the good things the education systems do, some of the bad things they do. I've also had to lay off 70 people. That's why I'm not interested in managing. So I went back to doing senior individual contributor trusted stuff. I've been a global product line chief engineer for GE appliances, for refrigerators and air conditionings across their entire global product. So I had the final say on the technical stuff when they went through CFC elimination and some of the other stuff they were doing there. I also ended up as the compressor manufacturer or the compressor manager for a while. When I got to GE Lighting Systems, I was the vice president of technology. So I guided that business technically. We were doing fine technically. We had a 250% of what our required first year new product sales was for the new products we were going to bring out. But the computer program killed us.
So you're saying you could bring some sense of business management perspective to the school board?
Yeah. And I was also talking to Aaron because a lot of people have asked me, well, if you don't have a teaching degree or if you don't have a teacher's license, I can get a teacher's license. I looked at the alternate licensing path for North Carolina. And this was after the meeting we talked to. I talked to Aaron about it for a while.
Well, sorry, just a sec. We're talking about Aaron Green, the superintendent.
Yes. And he got, I got a job offer from him too, as a teacher. My master of business administration was a four O. So I make it through that gate, all the way to the bottom of the thing. And it says, you need a job offer. And Aaron looked at me and says, you're a chemist? And I said, yeah. And he said, you want to work in my high school?
Well, they're always looking for teachers.
Certain more than others.
Yeah.
And I teach, I've been teaching homeschoolers, tutoring math at the Saluda school. I like kids and I like teaching. But I'm not a teacher. I did better as an engineer than anything else.
So as important as all the mundane prosaic stuff is to running a school district, I think most people are going to be judging you and your opponent based on more philosophical things that you bring to the table, right? I mean, you're, you said you're, in part, you're running because you're not really careful with Rob Parsons' philosophy. So what specifically are the sort of things that you, you worry about on the board? Are we talking about books? Are we talking about the way in which kids who are not heteronormative are treated?
Books can be an issue. I mean, I bought a book for the Saluda library. Okay? It's called Granite. Are you familiar with Granite?
No.
Are you familiar with the Iditarod?
Yes, actually. I, I spend a lot of time in Canada's Arctic. So dog sled racing is pretty familiar with.
You probably know Granite. You just don't think you know Granite.
Maybe.
You know the lady that won the Iditarod multiple times?
Yes.
Do you know what her lead dog, sled dog's name was?
I guess it was Granite.
You got it. Okay. So I'm putting a book in, I'm looking to ask Saluda in the regular library to accept a book that I got dedicated from her husband because she's passed away to the kids of Saluda. It was about Granite. It's a story like Thomas the Train, only it's for real. Granite was the sled dog. That last Iditarod, she never would have gotten there. It was all snowed in and covered up and she ran blind. Granite was it. And he got her first. So that's what the book is all about. They rejected my book.
Why?
They just said, we don't take books from people. They have to come through our system or we don't do it. That's wrong.
Okay, that's, that's a county library you're talking about?
No, that was, yes, that was a Saludas No, that was, yes, that was the Saludas, the library in Saluda.
Right, which is part of Polk County Library.
Polk County Library, right.
Okay, but that's not school board library.
I started to go do school board libraries and I found out it's going to run into the very same thing. If it's not within their clique that decides what goes in, it doesn't go in. I think that needs to change a bit. We need to be a little more open minded. See, turning down a book about some little dog helping someone who'd never done something achieve something that couldn't be done supposedly, doesn't sound to me like a story that shouldn't be in a library.
I found this story a bit odd, so I checked with the Polk Library. They have no record of Granite being submitted and reviewed. But it turns out that even if it was reviewed, it would have been rejected because Granite is a self-published book and the library doesn't ordinarily accept self-published books, mostly because they tend not to go through the kind of quality control that books produced by established publishers do. That doesn't mean there aren't good self-published books out there. I have helped a couple of authors publish their own books myself, but libraries do have a right to set standards.
When did this issue with a book happen for you?
18 months ago, just after I got back from Alaska and just after I had withdrawn from the first run because I realized there was a better candidate. But I work for that person now. She's now the Republican Party Chair for the GOP in Polk County, as you know.
Yep.
She got me engaged because I decided since I'm retired, this is what I want to do. And I want to do the school board. So I've become fairly active. I've been a representative to the NC GOP for two times now, the 2022 and the 2024. I'm also, like I said, the vice chair of the Saluda Republican Precinct. Unfortunately, I can't be the chair, even though we lost our chair, because that would be against the law since I'm a candidate.
Right, yeah.
So I can be a vice chair, not a chair.
What sounds to me like Robin, instead of being a candidate, is starting to run the party rather.
So when it ran, that, that legislation change you were talking about, that was a get out the vote thing. One thing you may not be aware of, and I wasn't either until I started doing voter roll analysis to find out where I stood in possibilities of election because I took the $1,000 limitation. I could do more, but I didn't think that was fair. So I have the same limits that Rob's probably got, $1,000 maximum. I'm not going to beat him to death with advertising. I'd rather run against him on a fair bound.
Well, that's in part why, why I have you on the podcast, I think, yeah.
So now, back to what I was saying. 40% of the people in Saluda didn't vote on down ballot elections because they had no idea who to vote for. So they sold this in the elect, in the legislature as it improved the vote. We're expecting to see like 80 or 90% of the people vote all the way down the ballot this time as partisan. So we'll find out. If the legislature is right and you get a 40% improvement in who's voting, isn't that more democratic?
The actual numbers here are quite different. In the last election in Polk County, school board seats attracted 80% of the ballots cast for the national and state candidates. It's probably true that adding party affiliation to the name will decrease the number of voters who skip over the school board section of the ballot. But it's not going to be nearly as dramatic as Rick suggests.
People are entitled to make, to use whatever.
Thing here bringing me on is exactly why they don't vote. Nobody gets a chance to know school board candidates.
I, I agree.
No guidance. You're doing part of it now. You're doing your bit. You're bringing something to the table. But so is the party when they changed, or so is the legislature when they changed it. So people at least had a guide. There's this group and there's this group. Before, they had no idea.
Okay, but the argument on the other side is that if people choose not to vote for down ballot ticket, down ballot candidates because they just don't know anything about them, perhaps that's a more responsible way to vote than simply voting for them because they got a D or an R beside their name.
Now, we're going to seriously disagree on that because one of the things I served in the military for was to protect the right of vote. That is the only great political power we have and we don't want to ruin it. You said you were from Ukraine.
My, my grandparents from Ukraine.
Your grandparents. Why did they leave Ukraine?
Well, it was at a time when life was pretty rough in Ukraine and Canada was giving away lots of free land in the prairies, so.
And their votes didn't count. And when they got to Canada, did your votes count?
Well, they certainly did.
There you go.
Okay.
See, your parents wanted to move to where their vote meant something and they uprooted their life to do it. That became a very big thing for me because I served in the end of the Cold War. I served from 1972 to 1981. I still remember the pictures of the Berlin Wall with the families trying to get out, being shot and left to rot hanging on the barber bar. You may not be old enough to remember that.
No.
But I do, and that had a big impression on me.
Well, I'm certainly not going to argue with you about the importance of the right to vote. I mean, as.
So if I encourage them to vote, that's what I want.
I'm, and again, I'm not arguing that people shouldn't have the right to vote. I'm saying what's, what is a more responsible thing to do? To not vote for someone who you don't really know or to vote for them only because you know which party they're affiliated with?
That's half a question. Here's the rest of it. It's more responsible to go out and find out about the candidates and then vote. Not everybody chooses to do that. So do you want to reward people for not necessarily getting involved? That's all they're trying to do with the parties is make them at least say, here's something, even if you don't want to go learn it. I choose to go out and investigate candidates. That's how I knew about Rob Parsons. I did internet searches on him. I do that on every person I vote for. When I went to, when I went to register the first time, Cliff looked at my voting record and said, you are very unusual. I don't have another candidate who's voted in every office.
You know, that's probably fair. I may have skipped a couple of judges in the votes in the last few years because I really didn't know whom to choose from.
No, it's not just that. I've voted in every eligible election since I moved here in 99.
Well.
Primary, general, and he hadn't, didn't have any other candidates that had done that.
Well, that is, that's a very interesting thing, which I might check with Cliff on that, but.
You don't have to. Voting records are public. You can run my voting record.
Yeah, Cliff answers his emails faster than. But, you know, and the fact that we're having this conversation, I think we, we agree on the need for people should do their research.
People should do their homework.
Right, right.
That's the most responsible.
Right. Okay, but since you.
I don't want to answer half questions.
Okay, but since you're, you're convinced that party affiliation is a, a useful piece of information for people to judge candidates on, how are you thinking about your party? Because.
I like my party.
Okay, you're, you're, you're happy with the leader?
I mean, while you're on that subject, I said, I think it's useful. I think that's pretty much endemic. You go to any country in the world, they may have six or seven, but they all have parties.
Yeah.
And what they are is groups of people who are mutually aligned in common beliefs. So a party gives you something to root to. May not all lap over perfectly to what you believe in. I'm probably maybe 70% Republican.
Only 70?
I've never found anybody I 100% agree with, except maybe my wife. For instance, Donald Trump was not my primary vote.
Well, that's interesting. Do you mind sharing?
I'm stumping for him right now.
Did you, was it Nikki Haley?
Nope.
Okay.
Ron DeSantis.
Ron DeSantis, okay.
And the reason I stump for him is the Reagan rule. After the primary, no Republican should denigrate any other Republican. And you know what? The Democrats have the Reagan rule also.
So the interesting thing about making nonpartisan elections partisan and introducing more part influence on partisanship into it is that you kind of lose a little bit of control. I mean, if the whole country starts turning away from Republicans, I'm not saying that's likely, but let's say, you know, we have a very polarized electorate. Polk County has been about two thirds Republican for the last few elections. Say that shifts a little bit, doesn't that mean that you're kind of going with the flow? I mean, you, you give up a little bit of control over your own relationship with the electorate if people are voting for you in large part because of which party you represent rather than who you are and what you bring to the table?
Okay, there's, there's a multiple questions here. First off, one of the reasons I'm on this podcast is I don't want people to just vote for me because I'm Republican. Some people will, and I think that. Other people want to decide whether I'm a better candidate or Rob Parsons. And I'm on this podcast to help them make that decision. And as far as candidate, parties moving back and forth, partisan is just an indicator. And I don't always vote 100% one way or another. As a matter of fact, a few years ago, they took that ability off the ballot here in North Carolina. You still have to go down one at a time. They want you to make a choice. So even though it's partisan aligned to include more in the vote, it's not 100% partisan. You still have to pick every single individual down ballot. So when they get to me and Rob Parsons, they got to make a choice. I want them to choose me because of what I offer them.
Okay. So in other words, you're not opposed to the introduction of partisanship, but you would hope that that isn't the only thing that people care about?
I always want people to research the candidates and make their own choices. I encourage my wife and my sister-in-law to vote. They were pretty much non-voters until we got married and my sister-in-law moved in. I don't tell them who to vote for. I mean, I learned that back with my grandmothers when, when I was in a Naval Academy midshipman and they needed a ride to the polls and they asked me who to vote for. And I said, whom you think is, you should vote for? And they came back and said they were good little Democrats. And I said, well, I voted for the other guy. And they said, well, if you told us, we'd have voted for that. And I said, no, 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 no. I said, you're a smart lady. You raised me. You can pick your own candidates. And what was really interesting is every vote after that, they were looking through the paper and they were looking out for what they could and they made their own choices. So I was really pleased with that.
Okay, let's just, this has gone on for a little bit longer than I thought, so thank you.
It's all right. We've been having a good time.
Yeah, I'm enjoying the conversation. Well, just to wrap up, is there some subject, some issue that has been before the board, some matter of public interest that you, we haven't talked about, that you think you would be concerned with when you're on the board?
No, I, I actually think the board's doing a pretty good job, actually. The one issue I have with my, with my opponent, I don't know how to get, you know, rumor mills, right?
Very well. Again, another reason for, for this podcast.
Okay. Rumor mill has it, and it's all unconfirmed, just rumor mill, that when they did the closed vote, it was 5-1. One person was absent on, on Ellen Rogers. Oddly enough, when it was an open meeting vote, it was 6-0 because there was also a missing person. Now, forcing that open meeting vote changed some minds because it put sunshine on some people. I'm just going to leave it at that.
I think it's important to note here that that's not the way others present at the meeting remember it. According to Superintendent Aaron Green, no second open vote was taken. The original vote to terminate held in July was subsequently ratified in an open session. But the actual closed door vote was, is not available for public inspection. But we do know it didn't change because the board didn't hold another vote.
And one follow-up, just because you said that you're relatively happy with the school board, it doesn't mean you don't think you can do a better job, so I'm, I'm trying to.
Well, I already told you where I can.
You know, no.
I can in the 90% of mundane stuff that nobody else knows what to do with.
All right, but I find it interesting that we, you know, for the first election where we have partisan elections, there's three seats up for election, right? Rick Kovell.
Lucinda Allen.
Lucinda Allen and Rob Parsons. Lucinda's an independent. Rick is a Democrat. Neither of those have a Republican challenger. Why do you think that is?
We didn't have anybody in that area who wanted to run. And this will blow your mind. We helped Lucinda get her signatures to get on the ballot because she was running as an independent. And we have supported and campaigned for her because we don't have a Republican running and she's the one we want. So even though it's partisan, we actually have a party who's picking a non-Republican because we don't have a dog in that fight and saying, this is who we think is the best party candidate. So Lucinda is getting support from us.
Well, just so you know, that doesn't blow my mind.
It may some people.
Right. I mean, and, and anyone who wants to know more about Lucinda Allen can listen to the podcast episode with her back when she was running for, to get the number of signatures to get on.
You know why she's running? She flat told us that she didn't want to see the 20 some years or 30 some years that she's worked on the board go away because she was unhappy with her challenger.
I'll talk to her challenger hopefully later. Okay, I forgot one last question. This is a national issue, which I usually don't want to bring into our podcast, but many, many states are passing laws requiring school boards to forbid cellphone use.
Yeah, actually, that came up with the media last night.
Yeah.
They were talking about, I, I am in favor of regulated cellphone use in classrooms. And, and I say regulated because that has to have some thought in it. Parents sometimes, cellphones have become useful ball and chain devices, annoying sometimes a blessing others.
Parents want to keep tabs on their kids.
Parents want to keep tabs on their kids. They want to be able to contact their kids, but there's other ways to do that. And it's going to take a regulatory scheme in there to do that. And there's going to have to be consequences for violating that, which means you're going to have to have behavioral infractions that are going to get enforced. But some of the things they talked about that work. One school system put in little bags, drop the phone in, seal the top. It goes in your locker. It's basically a Faraday cage. Cellphone's dead till you go back out and get it back. That works. They've also had another one that used little lockers. You put your cellphone in your locker and close the locker. Problem with that is it gets noisy sometimes because the fuzz are still going off.
But what would you like to see, say like a 10th grader, should they be able to whip out their phones during class?
No. 10th graders should turn their phones in when you start in the morning and pick them up in the evening. They can have them during lunch, but I want them there to learn. I want them there to get their reading, writing and arithmetic, the three Rs of the old days. They're going to get socialization, but they don't need to get it on the times that they're supposed to be working on improving their knowledge skills and learning things they can do later on to support themselves. See, I see schools as a capital investment. This person is being given a certain amount of knowledge so that at some point in the future, they can do things to support themselves. You know, I've been down to, and my wife and I looked at doing a, a second home or something in Panama. They don't do that in Panama. And they have people who will move from one, one business to another because they know stuff. And the people that work for a business won't necessarily teach their coworkers. These are all things we take for granted here in the United States. They don't happen in other countries. A public education system is a big deal. And it's interesting too, because it says, we're entitled to a free and public education. And it was written by people in the UK. Public has a different meaning in the UK.
It's the opposite over there.
Public means you can purchase it. Government school is what we have. And government schools are not what was promised. They intended for people to be able to go to what school they want. So that would basically mean our original constitutional founders basically loved school choice.
Well, that's a subject for a whole nother long argument. But so you're basically saying you don't have a problem?
But you didn't disagree with me on the word interpretation either.
Well, I'd have to do my research before I could come to a conclusion on what the, Well, I'd have to do my research before I could come to a conclusion on what the, what the founders thought about schools. I know that they cared very much about education, whether or not they would approve of school vouchers as North Carolina has embraced. I, I don't know.
Yeah, I think they would have. Benjamin Franklin had a whole bunch of children out of wedlock, and you know, he paid to educate every single one of them.
Doesn't though, doesn't the notion of using, you know, taxpayer dollars from the whole state to fund private schools and charter schools, doesn't that make it harder for counties like Pope County, which doesn't have any, any, any charter schools?
Oh, I love this question.
Well, doesn't it make it harder for us to fund our own schools?
No, I love this question. See, I started off putting my son in Catholic grade schools, okay, in Jefferson County, Kentucky, because they weren't that great, public schools weren't that great. During that time period, what I paid in tithes was tax deductible. And they said, oh, no, you're getting a value for that. Well, I'm entitled under the Constitution to a free and public education. So if I'm tithing to a group to teach my kids, I'm not taking anything away from the county, they still get my taxes, they still get the portion of my car that says school tax, they still get the portion of my house that says school tax. I haven't affected their funding other than the fact that I'm getting a deduction for paying for a free good. They didn't agree with that. So now, when you go to a parochial school, you have to pay the tab. But I still pay all those other taxes. So no, I don't agree with you. I'm not affecting their funding. I may be affecting their headcount, but I'm not affecting their funding, and in fact, I'm inserting a little competition, which is excellent. That's why we have homeschools. That's why I tutor math for them.
Okay, but the problem with vouchers, as I understand the argument against it, is that you're basically giving money to people who already have a fair bit, because the vast majority of families that take the vouchers already have more than enough resources to send their kids to private schools. And this is just a statistical fact, is in, in, across the country, vouchers in, in other states where they've been longer established than they are in North Carolina, between 60 and 80% of the families that take advantage of vouchers, which is basically free money from the state to send your kids to a private school, are already in, in, in a tax bracket where they can afford to do that. The families who can't afford to do that aren't in a position to take, to take advantage of the vouchers because there just aren't that many options in, in where they live.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to disagree seriously on that, and I'm going to turn it around, take it out, have a different context. You're probably better off than a lot of the people that live downtown Saluda, whatnot, that don't really have a whole lot. And yet, we all take our little voucher, that little green thing, and we all go to whatever store we choose to go to, to buy products we can get readily available anywhere else. All we're doing with the voucher is instead of letting the state of North Carolina decide this person's going to get this money, we're saying these little school things can all educate. And yeah, the person who has a few bucks maybe could afford it, but we're based on, you get to keep what you make, the public takes its portion of it, and we already have a progressive income tax. So giving them back money they paid the state in the first place, because no state has money. All they have is our money. That's the whole thing. Everybody loses track of the money. There's not a single dollar in the United States or the state of North Carolina. Zip. Every year, we, the people, give them money to run the government we elected to supervise what we do.
You know, this is interesting because you keep bringing up issues that I want to explore.
Now, Canada's different, so I expect you to have a different, Canada's a monarchy.
Technically, yes.
Technically, yes, they still align. They have a parliament which they've given preference to, but it's a dictatorial monarchy. They don't, you choose to do it, but they could.
The notion that King Charles would overrule a Canadian parliamentary law is pretty remote.
I understand the remoteness, but if you look at the background history, that's where the people who didn't want a democracy went.
Yeah, I suppose so. But just, just to wrap up here, because we, it sounds to me like we could go on all day.
I don't know about you.
Well, I don't, I don't think our listeners want to, to go on all day. But I'm not confident that creating a lot of competition in school systems is the best way to ensure quality education.
It is for every other product.
Yes, but public education isn't like every other product.
It's a product.
That's not the way Jefferson and Adams and Madison would have looked at it.
Well, then, okay, what, why are we, why do we have the university system we have?
Well, you, you...
We shouldn't. We should have one university, and it should be part of the state. We should have North Carolina State University and nothing else. We don't need Harvard, we don't need Yale, we don't need Wharton. Just, just because they tend to offer products that are different, and, and everybody supports it, and they spend beaucoup bucks on it, okay? I mean, that's the very thing that's, that's shooting down what you're trying to argue to me. Colleges have been around since Jefferson, they've been independent, they've all been separate, they've all been paid for, and they are an educational product, and they are a competition. Don't kid yourself about it. People work their butts off to get in certain schools over other schools.
As, as a follow...
I want to see that run down, run down the ladder, and I've seen it work in Jefferson County, because the county schools have gotten better because 40% of the kids in Jefferson County where I grew up went to parochial schools.
Well, I don't have much experience with the folks in other counties.
That, that I do. I bring that to the table also.
My concern is that Pope County, we don't have charter schools that you can, you know, send your kid to if you don't want him to go to Pope County, and you're not in a position to homeschool your kid, because most people aren't.
There's also an online school that you done...
Yes, there is, but again, as COVID proved, online only is not a great thing for every kid.
And charter schools can be created quickly.
They can, but you know, Lake Lur Academy has had its problems, that's maybe the closest one, you know?
Those are the bigger schools. The, the state has a sort of a non-regulated arrangement for small schools, 30, 40 kids. You can create a 30-to-40 kid private school with one or two teachers. They did it out west, it was called the Little Schoolhouse.
The bottom line is we don't have any in Pope County right now, and in part...
But the barriers to entry are small for that. That's why they did it.
But I would argue that maybe the reason we don't is that Pope County schools, which ranks very highly in the state, it's usually two or three in terms of academic performance in the whole state, which is remarkable. It does that in part because Pope County commissioners give around $4,500 a year per student to the Pope County schools to supplement what the state gives. And that's actually relatively high for a rural county. So in other words, the support for the public school system in this county is what has made it as good as it is.
Not entirely. The support has provided the means to make it what it is. We happen to have a good group of teachers and educators that deliver a product. Those two are not separate, or don't always go together. If they did, you wouldn't have problems in Asheville, where they got lots of money, and they don't have what they're looking for in quality of education.